Chancellor Burke will provide a welcome greeting.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our hybrid board meeting of the South Orange County Community College District. We thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate this virtual platform. We welcome trustees Marsha Milchiker, Tim Jamal, Teri Witt-Rydell, Barbara J., Carolyn Inman, T.J. Prendergast, James Wright, and Student Trustee Zatara Mateen, who are joining us in person. We welcome members of our district community who are participating virtually, and members of the public who are viewing the meeting live via Zoom webinar. Please be advised that everyone participating via Zoom, video, or call has been muted. Following the meeting, the district will make the recording available on the SOCCCD website. The audio of this meeting is being closed captioned in real time. The board is open to receiving public comments. Pursuant to Governor Newsom's Executive Order N-1521, and in compliance with AB 361, the published agenda stated that members of the public requesting to provide comments will be given the opportunity to make public comments directly via remote access and in real time during the meeting. Members of the public wishing to make a comment will be instructed to use the raise hand feature, unmute their audio, and must comply with the two-minute time limit. I would now like to turn the meeting over to trustee Milchiker, who will call the meeting to order.
The December 13th, 2021, meeting of the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees is hereby called to order. This governing board meeting is conducted pursuant to California Government Code Section 54953, Assembly Bill 361, and Governor Newsom's Executive Order N 1521. I welcome back the trustees who are attending in person. District's draft and members of the public are attending the meeting via Zoom webinar. Are there any actions and co-session that needed to be reported on?
No, there were no actions that need to be reported.
And now we will have an invocation by trustee Barbara J., and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by, led by trustee James Wright.
My dear heavenly Father, we come to you in gratitude for this wonderful season that is upon us, a season of light, a season of giving, of sharing, of love, of family, and of joy, a season of sincere gratitude for being able to worship in the dictates of our heart, a season to be kind, to be respectful of all people, of all beliefs, and to treat everyone with love and with deep understanding and appreciation. We ask your guidance in following the principles laid down in the classic hymn by songwriters Jill Jackson and Cy Miller, who said, "Let there be peace on earth; let it begin with me." Let there be peace on earth, the peace that was meant to be. With God our Creator, children all are we. Let us walk with each other in perfect harmony. Let peace begin with me. Let this be the moment now. With every step I take, let this be my solemn vow, to take each moment and live each moment in peace eternally. Let there be peace on earth, and let it begin with me. Amen.
Amen.
Have pleasant greetings to the President of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of the public wishing to comment on an agenda item or on other matters of interest to the public are within the subject, that are within the subject matter and jurisdiction of the board, will be given an opportunity to make public comments directly via remote access and in real time during the meeting. Members of the public wishing to make a comment will be required to use the raise hand feature, will be unmuted and asked to speak. A two-minute time limit for each speaker will be observed. Be advised that the maximum time allotment for public speakers on any one topic, regardless of the number of speakers, shall be 20 minutes. Are there any public comments?
There are none.
No public comments. Hearing no comment, the record should reflect that there were no comments from the public. And now we go to the agenda and proceed as usual.
So we begin with a presentation to you, trustee Milchiker, to thank you for your year of service as the board president, from a grateful board and from a grateful district. So I would open the floor to any trustees who would like to make comments.
Well, I'll make a couple comments. I think trustee Milchiker, you showed a lot of principled leadership throughout the year. It was a challenging year for everybody, and I would think this commendation or recognition is definitely well-earned. So, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Jamal.
As the new person on the board, I want to thank you, trustee Milchiker, President Milchiker, for the help and the warmth and the support, making me feel welcome and as all the people are. But as the leader, I just commend you on all of the things that you've done for each of us. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Thank you. Trustee J.
I want to thank you for all your hard work and your dedication to the job. You've done a wonderful job. We thank you.
Thank you, trustee J.
Trustee Witt-Rydell?
Well, I have to tell you, trustee J., you stole my thunder there. But, Marsha, thank you so much for your hard work. It was so evident, and especially in the last run here, the last few months, all that was expected, and the numerous hours that you put in, and I don't think anybody sees that. And I appreciate that, and keeping up the communication when needed. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Witt-Rydell.
Yeah, I would just tag along with all that. Everyone's saying it very well, and you did a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything that you've done.
Okay, thank you, trustee Wright.
Trustee trustee.
Yeah, I think everyone pretty much said it all, but thank you for all your support and kindness to everyone, and you're definitely someone I look up to as well.
Thank you so much. Student trustee, oh, how beautiful. Thank you.
Stand up and get a photo.
This will go on my desk. It'll be beautiful. They leave our master? Yeah, I guess. Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. Beautiful.
That's the nicest plaque I think we've ever got.
Thank you. Yeah, this is the nicest plaque I've ever got.
I don't remember getting that.
Well, you didn't get that, huh?
I got the first one.
You guys clap too?
Not that nice.
Really?
Last year, yeah, I got that one.
Oh, I missed out.
Yeah, I never got anything like this before, ever. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, are we supposed to clap?
Yeah.
So, thank you. Wait a second here. No. Oh, right. Right here. Right now, this is the annual organizational meeting. So, right now, I will adjourn our meeting, and the meeting is now adjourned, and I'll call the annual organizational meeting to order. The first business is the election of officers. So, this is the first point of business, is the election of the president. Are there any nominations? Yes, trustee Jamal?
Well, I think it's on cue, given the ceremony we just had. You know, we don't have, in this district, a line of succession. We don't have a specified organizational plan that dictates who becomes an officer or president. We don't have a formal rotation, unlike, you know, some agencies do, some don't. You know, even some cities directly elect their mayor. That's obviously not a, not the situation here in the district. But, I mean, I, you know, I think that's worthy of a conversation. I think whether we want to go in a direction like that or not, I do feel like a two-year term is, a two-year presidency is, seems to make sense to me if someone is doing the job appropriately. Trustee Milchiker, I think that I've already said a little bit, but, and you were, you know, board president during a challenging year, and I think, you know, your finest moment was when we had the, you know, difficult conversation about a vaccine mandate, and I think your preparation and delivery of, and opening that session was, was one of your hallmarks of your presidency. And thank you for setting the tone during that, and I nominate you for president again.
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations?
Your mic.
Are there any other nominations? So, thank you so much for the nomination. Can the clerk please call the role of the board?
Trustee Inman?
Yes.
Trustee J.
Yes.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Oh, I guess I should abstain.
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 Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. I will do my best and work hard another year to do my best for the board.
If I may, along that mindset, it would seem reasonable that, you know, if willing to serve, that the board officers would remain the same as well, seeing as you worked with them, unless you don't want to work with them again.
No, they work, we work great together.
So I think I can safely assume that we could nominate trustee Jamal as vice president again, and if we're allowed, trustee Witt-Rydell as clerk in conjunction.
Okay, that sounds like a good idea to me. Is there any, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, trustee J. Seconds it. Okay. Do you accept?
Yeah. You have the right to accept or not. Well, thank you for that. I appreciate it, and absolutely. Of course, I'm willing to serve in this role, and thank you for the nomination. I don't know if we're allowed to do them on block or not, but, can? We can?
Each exhibit, you can vote on each exhibit separately.
Okay.
You can vote on the vice president and clerk together.
The vice president first.
We've done that before, I know. Okay. Okay, so, and I think we did a good job this past year. Looking forward to working with the two of you for another year, so that would be excellent, and with an excellent board, too. So, trustee Grace Garcia, can you please call the role?
Trustee Inman?
Yes.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
So, we're voting on both? No, just one at a time. This is the vice president now? Yeah. Abstain.
Oh, I thought it was both.
No, it's better to do them separate.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
So now I'll move, if she'll accept, trustee Rydell as the clerk.
I second.
Okay. So, board secretary or board clerk, can you, board secretary, can you call the role, please?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Abstain.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
It's a good, good, good board and a good, good leadership team, so looking forward. Looking forward to working with the leadership team and with the board, because it's a very good board, too. Okay, thank you. And now, the appointment of the secretary. So, do we have a nomination for the secretary? Can we do the secretary and assistant secretary together? And I would recommend Kathleen Burke for the secretary and Anne Marie Gable for the, for the secretary. Do we have a motion for that?
So moved.
So moved, trustee J. And second for trustee Witt-Rydell. So, can you please call the role, Madam Secretary?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, and the next is Exhibit C, which is appointment of the trustee representatives. And the first one is the representative to nominating committee to the committee and school organization. And right now, the representative is trustee Wright, and the alternate is trustee Prendergast. Do you want to go with that one again, or?
Well, somebody else wants to.
Does somebody else want it, or?
Which? This is number one, the representative to the nominating committee to elect members?
Yeah.
It's for the Orange County School Board Association. So, when they, when they have elections, you serve on that committee.
Oh, that's what this is?
Trustee Wright is, is the person on that. I'm the alternate. I can tell you, trustee Wright really had a rough year with that. It was so busy.
Well, it's something to put on your resume, anyway, right? Thank you. So, does somebody want to nominate the two of them, or just, unless somebody else wants to do it?
So moved.
So moved. I second.
Okay. So, trustee Jamal makes the motion, and trustee J. seconds it. And, Madam Secretary, can you call the role?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Abstain.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
And the next one is representative to OCSBA, and it was trustee Inman last time. Does someone want to represent her?
It was trustee Inman?
Yeah, or do you want somebody?
No.
What?
I think that I mentioned I would like it, but I think I saw in writing somewhere, wasn't it TJ?
Political action? No, I don't think it's me.
I think she's still on.
Because I'm already, I'm on the.
Vote number two as a school board.
I'm on the audit committee. All right, so I ask this question every year. What is this?
That's, that's, they have a meeting prior to every Orange County School Board Association Dinner meeting, which I think is two meetings a year now, isn't that? Well, they probably didn't meet during the pandemic, so.
But. I did this at one time, and I did it for, like, three years, and it was TJ, it was you and I, do you remember? And we'd see each other at the dinners. It's about three dinners, if I remember.
Yeah, it says three dinners here.
TJ's already our rep on the.
Yeah, see, I'm already the rep to the Orange County School Board Association.
So, do you want to do this also, or do you want trustee Inman to do this?
So, this is like a political action committee?
Yeah.
I think.
I don't think they have.
You don't think they have one?
The political action committee used to meet, when I was very involved with it, they had a, they had a small meeting in a small room at the same hotel where they had the dinner meeting, and then they would have more political presentations.
But everyone, okay, but we.
That's prior to the dinner.
Everyone's invited to that, anyway.
Anyone can go to that, absolutely.
Anyone can go, but the committee does need to determine speakers for those meetings.
Yeah.
I nominate trustee Prendergast.
It's not super active.
Maybe you should do it, because.
I move trustee Prendergast.
Inman, do you want it?
Oh.
I have another one that I'd like.
Okay. So, do you want to nominate trustee Prendergast? Because he's there anyway.
I think it makes sense.
I think it does, because he's there anyway.
He's our rep.
You want to do it? Okay.
It's fine. I mean, unless some, someone else.
Then trustee Inman, I know likes, you like the Legislative Task Force, right?
Yes, and I also want.
Okay, well, let's do, let's vote on this.
Okay. So, can you please call the role?
We need a second.
Oh, we need a second?
I second it.
Okay, trustee J. seconds it.
Trustee Inman?
Political action today.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Abstain.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
And then the representative of the Orange County Legislative Task Force. I know trustee Inman really liked doing this last year, so you probably want to continue, right?
Yes, I would, except that, would anybody else like to do it? Because it's a really interesting, different kind of thing.
No, well, if you'd like to do it, you can do it unless somebody else would like to do it. No, it seems like you've done a good job.
Thanks, that would be fine, then.
Okay.
Carolyn, how many times did you have to travel for the Legislative Task?
No, they don't travel. It's a monthly meeting in the, in Orange County.
But I thought once at Riverside. No?
No, I think, I think you're confusing that with the annual conference of the CCLC. This is strictly an Orange County task force.
Are you interested in doing it?
No.
No, I think trustee Inman liked it.
No.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm getting a sense trustee Inman would be willing to relinquish it if someone else is interested.
The reason it's interesting is that they tell you what's going on at the federal level and in Sacramento, behind the scenes, as well as what bills have moved on and all that kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah, and also, you, you and the other three community college districts in Orange County are trying to make a difference politically, which is, which is really, you know, the, the Orange County, the four community college districts in Orange County have some political clout with their local legislators. So, it's important, I think, you know? So, is there, someone want to make a nomination for trustee Inman?
I nominate trustee Inman.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, okay, so, okay, board secretary, can you please call the role?
I second.
Trustee Inman?
Abstain.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
And the next one is representative to the audit committee, so, which currently the chair is.
Are you going to do an alternate for the OCCCLTF?
Does somebody else want to be an alternate for the Orange County? Because I was the alternate last time.
I'll be the alternate with her.
Okay, so.
I nominate trustee Rydell as alternate.
Second.
Okay, can you call the role for the alternate?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Abstain.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
And the next ones are the representatives to the audit committee, and the chair is trustee Prendergast, and representative one is trustee Jamal, and representative two is trustee Wright. So, do you want to continue on that committee?
I'm happy to go off if there are others who are interested. I've served on it a few times, and, but I'm happy to stay as well. Is there anyone not on it that has a, for me personally, I'm not speaking for the others, just anyone.
Anyone has a burning desire to be on this one.
No, it's okay.
I will, I will accept chair if they promise there'll be sodas at the meeting, because I was dozing on this last one.
I move trustee Prendergast to chair the audit committee?
I second.
And then, and then, can we, can we nominate all three people at the same time?
Yes.
Can I nominate somebody? I've never done that. I nominate trustee Jamal and trustee Wright to serve on the audit committee, if they still want to do it. Do they still want to do it? Trustee Wright, would you still like to do it?
I think now that they heard their soda's involved, they'll probably do it.
Would you like to do it?
I'm in. Dr. Pepper, yeah.
Okay, okay, so, so is there a second?
I second it.
Second, trustee Inman seconds it. So, can you please call the role?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
And the next two, is the Saddleback College Foundation, and the representative to the Saddleback College Foundation is Teri Witt-Rydell, and the representative to the Irvine Valley College Foundation is Barbara J. So, do you, people want to continue? Barbara wants to continue? Trustee Witt-Rydell, do you want to continue too?
Yep.
Okay, so is that okay with everybody, or?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, I nominate them both. Is there a second? Okay, there's a second by trustee Inman.
No, can I just, oh, I guess we should vote, then I can say what I want.
Okay, can you please call the role, Madam Secretary?
Yeah.
Well, then, you should talk now.
Okay, there have been just one or two times where I could not go, and do you think we need an alternate? I mean, I think it's just been in the five, seven years I've done it, I've not been able to go a couple times, but do you think it should have an alternate?
I don't know.
I wouldn't think so.
No? Okay. The only reason I said that, chancellor, is that I like to give the report of, I give a report from the board to everyone, and so, that's the only reason I said that. Although President Elliott is there, and he gives much of the information, which is good.
I think if you can't go sometime, it's okay if you, you know, ask another board member if they want to take your place. You just ask someone. Don't you think that's okay?
Yeah, it's just, it's just hard to have someone jump in. You know, they, they usually have a long program of things they're planning, so.
Oh, okay.
I'm just concerned about them hearing, because it is the public. They want to hear what's going on at the board. Okay.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we need to vote on that? Can you please call the role, Madam Secretary?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Abstain.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
And then, these are representatives to the board policy subcommittee. I don't know if you still want to, right now, the chair is trustee Jamal, and the representative is trustee Witt-Rydell and trustee J. Trustee J. wants to do it. Do you still want to do it?
Well, so what I want to say is, I think it's been very gratifying, and, and I think very meaningful, the board policy meetings. We've had some, some items that slide through very swiftly, and some that we have longer discussions on with the chancellor and Anne Marie in particular, but I think it's been helpful, you know, as a subcommittee to get engaged in the issues, the policies that we set as a board. I would be willing, I'm willing to relinquish my role, or a seat, because I think, you know, getting some more people involved would be great, and I'm happy to serve again if it works out, but I'd like to at least nominate Carolyn Inman to be on the board policy subcommittee.
That's a great opportunity to really get to learn the board policies.
Okay, I second it.
I accept that. Thank you.
I don't know if we have to go, then do a separate vote on the chair, or, I don't, I'm not sure about that, but do you want to serve? Who are the other two that was?
It was myself and Bobby. If someone else wants to take my seat, that's fine. Later on in our meeting, I want to add something to our committees, but I can't do it now, so, Carolyn, if you would like to do it, that would be great. And Bobby, do you still want to do it? Okay?
Study yes, Bobby?
Yeah.
Okay. So, at this point, we have trustee Inman and trustee J. on the board policy on the slate, I guess, to be nominated. Are you interested?
I'm on a lot of things already, so I don't know if you want me on more.
Teri, do you want to do it again, then, or?
No, I have.
It's between you and me, then, I guess.
Yeah, I have three, well, if you want to do it.
I'm willing to, you know, I can go, I like doing it, but, but I don't have to do it. I'm, you know, I'm, I'm got other things that I'm.
I mean, I'm on the, I'm on the, I'm alternate on the nominating. I'm on the, I'm the political action representative.
You're the audit chair.
Audit chair.
That's enough.
Why should you do any of these?
No, I think being president is a lot of work. I don't think I'm going to take on another job.
I'm happy to stay.
Okay.
He's good.
I mean, yeah.
If you can't go.
It's all you.
Well, I'm asking trustee Witt.
No.
If you don't want to do it, then I'll do it.
Tim, you were great.
Yeah, you were.
Okay, so I'll, I'll stay on the, if the board approves. I'll stay on the nominating, I mean, the board policy.
Nominating trustee Jamal as chair and trustees Inman and J. as members.
Three representatives.
Okay. Do we need a second?
Second.
Okay, second. Okay, Madam Secretary, can you call the role?
Trustee Inman?
Abstain.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Abstain. Abstain.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
I'm counting votes.
Aye, you'll have four anyway.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye, aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
And, um, right, right now, we're moving on to establishing the regular meeting times and dates, and we're approving the calendar.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second for the calendar? I think we had, we had an opportunity to look it over, okay, trustee Inman seconds it? So, um, um, Madam Secretary, can you call the role for the, for the calendar?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, and thank you all for getting back to us on, on the calendars and, and really working together to get a calendar out, so that was good. Okay, and then we have to approve the agenda format, so is there a, a motion to approve the agenda format?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Then, okay, so there's trustee, um, Jay and trustee Jamal, okay, so can you please call the role, just, Madam Secretary?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Thank you, and that's the end of the organizational meeting. I thank all the, uh, fellow trustees for taking on these additional tasks that you don't make any more money for doing, so thank you for all of you doing that.
We missed the agenda planning calendar.
Oh.
We didn't do the board meeting dates or the planning.
Uh, we just did the board meeting.
We did the board meeting dates.
We didn't do, I thought we did the planning calendar. We didn't do that? Do we do the planning calendar? Okay, do, okay, thanks. We, we need a motion to approve the pre, planning calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, can you call the role?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, um, and we did the agenda format, right? Okay, so this concludes the organizational meeting, and right now, I, um, adjourn the org, organizational meeting, and at this time, I reconvene the regular meeting of the South Orange County District Board of Trustees, um, board meeting. They, they're not showing us the, the screen on, on our screens of what's going on on the agenda. I did, and it's still not showing. It hasn't shown the whole time. Push zoom?
You want to see this, right?
Okay, so maybe this is the one. No wonder. It hasn't been on here at all, so, okay. Okay, so at this time, um, we're doing board reports, and the board members can give a report at this time, so I think we'll, we'll start with trustee Inman. Do you want to start?
Sure. I went to the, uh, CCLC Annual Convention. Didn't feel much like a convention, though, because you didn't wander around and meet new people, which I've always found is a great way to find out what other schools are doing and, and get good ideas and so forth, but it was still great. I got a great deal out of both of the keynote speakers. The first was the president of CCLC, and one of the things he said that I had already heard, but it's still very interesting, is that the wealth and inequality i- in the United States is the highest since the Gilded Age. And that might not be, you know, well, i- it's just a problem, and, and it especially affects education and health. So that's why he was bringing it up. But he, like the, um, Lucy, is it Dunn? Yeah, that was in with the, um, Business Association, said that community colleges are the answer to bring the people back to work and to have new skills and all of that sort of thing. Um, that we are essential to the recovery that is ahead of us and already started. The other that I just loved was, uh, Dr. Daisy Gonzalez, who's the acting chancellor. She happens to be a former foster youth, and I have a special place in my heart for foster youths. So I was just so glad to see how, how advanced she is, beautiful speaker, you can just tell, it was just wonderful. And, um, she talked about optimism, which, given her, you know, all the things that she's been through in her life, to be optimistic, I thought was very moving. The second thing I did was the groundbreaking for Irvine Valley College. Everybody will be mentioning this, but it was, it was really exciting, and I had three reasons. Uh, the first was the enthusiasm. I've learned, I've gotten to know a lot of Irvine Valley people since I lived so close there, and, and seeing them and seeing, being with them when they were so exciting, excited, I should say, uh, was really nice. But the, um, the fine arts being in one location is just the best idea, and, uh, I'm just so happy. I think it's going to bring new, new life and new spirit to, to that campus and to the students, and you, you intermingle. When you're doing a play, you need music, and you need, you know, people to do sets, and you need all sorts of things. And so to intermingle in a one location, I think, is just a great idea. So, uh, tonight, I'm beginning my second year on the board. I already said so, but I want to thank everybody for the help and support that they've given me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and trustee Jay. Thank you, trustee Inman.
On Thursday, December the 2nd, I attended the Tustin's 26th Annual State of the City Program, located at the District of Tustin Legacy in the AMC Courtyard. The report included a video supposedly taken at a lemonade stand with leaders from various city departments discussing their functions and, and, and interacting with the lemonade, uh, stand customers, which were representing the public. It was cute and effective theme and very well described, uh, describes the ci, uh, the state of the city. Uh, Mayor, uh, Letitia Clark gave an excellent presentation, dinner was provided, and yes, Mayor Clark, I drank lemonade. The Saddleback College presented its Christmas program Feast of Lights on Saturday, December the 4th, in the McKenna Theater. What a fabulous holiday program it was. Scott Farling and Yugas, uh, Caritas led the orchestra enquirer in one of the finest Christmas program, Christmas programs I have had the pleasure of attending. Members of the chorus and orchestra exhibited a special energy and spirit, probably as the result of finally being able to perform fa, following the COVID di disruptions. The music was flawless despite the fact that the chorus members wore masks throughout the performance. Joey Sellers explained to me that these were special music masks, which allowed, um, allowed almost natural, uh, unmasked sound to come through. Thanks, Saddleback College, for a special holiday evening. The Saddleback, uh, nurse, um, Saddleback College Nursing Program Ceremony for the fall of 2021 class was held on Monday, the, December 6th, which I attended. This fine group of young women and men should be especially proud of their achievements in light of the roadblocks caused by COVID. The Leadership Award went to Brian Morales, and Kristy Ramsland earned the Spirit of Nursing Award. Congratulations to the members of this very special class of nurses who now join a, per, have not, who now join a professional much in need of their services. Last Saturday, December the 11th, I attended Saddleback's Holiday Big Band Concert in the McKenna Theater. Joey Sellers and the band put on another amazing and excellent performance. It made us in the audience feel very special for the holidays. The band performance was wonderful, and they featured a fine vocalist, a Saddleback student, Alexa Pinarah, Marahah. Congratulations and thanks to the Saddleback Big Band for a job well done and for setting the spirit of the holiday season.
Thanks, trustee.
Thank you.
Thanks, trustee Jay. I need to get one of those masks, okay, singing mask. Okay, trustee Jamal?
Yep, uh, uh, the, the PAC dedication, Irvine Valley College Performing Arts Center dedication was fabulous. I have no doubt it will be an awesome addition to an already great campus. Um, I want to congratulate Saddleback College for hosting the CIF Playoffs over the last few days. When the stadium concept was brought to us aboard, uh, to the board, um, for approval, one of the, um, principal arguments that was made is that we would be able to host CIF Playoffs and, and allow Saddleback to be showcased nationally, and lo and behold, um, it happened. So my congratulations to the, to Saddleback College. We got a nice update, uh, a few minutes ago from Matt Brode. Thank you, Matt, for doing that, and, um, I'm sure Elliot, Dr. Stern, will give us a further update in, uh, in his reports. And then lastly, uh, we had a very healthy discussion among the board officers about board, uh, leadership transition that will be taking place here at the district. Um, we're going to search for a new chancellor, and I can tell you that, uh, we take this very seriously. It is the only employee that we, um, hire, fire, supervise. Um, and so, um, this is very important to us, and, and we had a good discussion with the board leadership, the board officers. Uh, and then lastly, it is, uh, the holiday season. Uh, I believe we have the best community college district in the state of California. I think we have the best staff, the best administration, the best faculty, and of course, the best students. And, um, you know, I'm grateful to be on the board, and I, I'm sure you all join me in being grateful to be part of this incredible district. Thank you.
I agree.
Agreed.
Okay, trustee Whitrydel?
Yes, I attended, um, uh, all of these events except the, um, CIF Conference. Um, I just want to say a couple of things about what has already been said, but in my way. Uh, December 1st, the groundbreaking at IVC, it was great, and I'm so excited that you called it the Fine Arts Village. It really lit, uh, a fire in me to think, wow, I want to walk through a village. I want to be part of art. I'm a science person, and that did excite me. On December 2nd, the Tustin Chamber of Commerce, uh, met, and I have to say my hat's off to Mayor, uh, Letitia Clark. I love the way she presented it. It was, uh, very, it, it was good. It was, really was. December 4th, the Feast of Lights, I have to say this was the best ever that I've attended. I have to say we have talented, talented, uh, the singers, the orchestra, they were absolutely awesome. You hit the ball out of the park. Is that the expression? Um, and then I wanted to say thank you to Dr. Scott Farley and his assistant conductor. Um, it really was a group of talented people. December 6th, the nursing pinning ceremony, which you all know is very dear to my heart. It was exciting to share after two years in person the excitement of these graduates. Remember, it's an honor to stand there and hear their oath, because they make their oath to the patients that they will take care of. And also, they receive their PIN. To this day, as it was yesterday, I can remember receiving my PIN, and we're all excited to look at it because it says Saddleback College on it. All right, um, looking forward, I'm excited to go to the groundbreaking on the 15th for the Gateway Building here on our campus. And I also wanted to share, and I mentioned it to the trustees and my colleagues before, that I've been listening to a lot of webinars, and a lot of those discuss the, the DEI and this diversity, equity, and inclusion. Many of the trustees are getting involved. So I'd like to just plan to see now that maybe we can form a committee. We'll talk about that during our retreat. But I think we, as trustees, need to be involved so heavily as the trustees, um, that, mm, probably 25 schools already that I've listened to, their trustees also help in that endeavor. Um, I just wanted to say thank you so much to my esteemed colleagues for this past year, um, the student trustee, and I'd like to thank our dedicated faculty, and I mean that word, dedicated faculty, are, and I didn't say excellent administrators. And I want to say for our classified, we couldn't, can't get the work done without you, and thank you for making us look so good. And then our talented students. I wish you a wonderful holiday. Rest during this time. We've had a lot going on, so take a breath, enjoy the holidays, and I wish you a very healthy and safe new year.
Thank you, and trustee Ju, uh, Prandergast?
All right, thank you. Uh, on November 17th, I attended as a representative for the community colleges, the Orange County School Board Association meeting. Um, a lot of, a lot of time was spent on, you know, just basic things, setting up what, who we're going to have as guest speakers and so forth, but, uh, there was a long discussion, uh, just to kind of put everyone's mind at ease. We're not the only board that has had long public comments on issues related to masks and mandates. Uh, the K through 12s are really getting hit with, uh, critical race theory, because many people don't understand what that is, and so they think it's a bad thing, and they think they should not have it in the K through 12 schools. So they're asking all the K through 12s to pass resolutions to not do it, which they're happy to do, because they don't. So, it's a very easy resolution to pass. Um, so anyway, uh, but yes, so we have some exciting speakers lined up for the next dinner meeting. Uh, on November 20th, I attended the Australia Awards, uh, put on by the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, Orange County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. Wow, uh, I absolutely commend Dr. Hernandez and his staff for getting involved with this organization and providing an opportunity for us to be a part of that, and it was, it was a really, really very nice night. So thank you so much for that invitation. Um, I won't say too much more about the groundbreaking of the fine arts and the state of the city, other than to kind of connect the two. Uh, I spent the State of the City, um, basically sitting at a table with the Tustin City Art Council. Um, and they were very happy to hear that there's a, you know, use the science term, a Petri dish of art, right, in their backyard, that they can use to get ideas and possibly, uh, display some student art in the city of Tustin. Even though Irvine Valley College is in Irvine, it's neighboring city, and so they were really excited to hear about that. So just wanted to tie those two together, and I did attend the Feast of Lights and the Nurses Pinning. As was said earlier, they were wonderful events. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, trustee Wright, thank you.
Yes, I, I've attended several events. Uh, on Saturday, November the 27th, I attended the invitation to Saddleback College Women's Soccer Match at 7:00 PM at the, uh, stadium. A wonderful evening, Saturday evening. On Saturday, December the 4th, uh, I also attended the Feast of Lights in the McKenna, in the McKenna, McKenna Theater, Saddleback College. Also, on Monday, December the 6th, at 2021 Saddleback College Nursing Pinning Ceremony. Uh, I went to that cer, ceremony at 5 o'clock. Wonderful, wonderful con, uh, ceremony. And then I, I also will want to go on Wednesday, December the 15th, at 8:00 AM in the morning, for the Saddleback College Gateway Building, uh, groundbreaking ceremony takes place. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll say a few things, and, um, I have to repeat some things, but I'll try to be fast. Um, thank you, trustee Wright. Um, the Australia, I, I attended along with, um, trustee Prandergast, the Australia Awards at the Disneyland Hotel. IVC had a table, and I was honored to be invited, and it was just delightful. And President John Hernandez knew just about everybody in the entire room. It was pretty impressive. And, and at the board meeting, as, as trustee, trustee Jamal mentioned, we, we had a leadership meeting and discussed the process of hiring a chancellor, and it was very valuable, and we're ready to kick off the process with everyone's kind assistance. And the IVC groundbreaking, uh, spoke about it. Uh, all the arts programs are going to be in one area at IVC, and that will be lovely, singing, dancing, um, performing arts, uh, um, visual arts. It'll be just fabulous. Uh, at the State of the City, um, which is at the Tustin Legacy, our own PIO, Letitia Clark, is the mayor, and she did a superb job of officiating. The nursing pinning ceremony was lovely. Um, I attended a teach-in presentation of the Baha'i faith organized by Spanish professor Carmen Hernandez Bravo. Um, Dr. Ray Zimmerman, the Saddleback, um, College Professor of English and Interdisciplinary Studies, educated us all about the Baha'i religion, as he's a member of that faith. Just fascinating. Um, and, and the Feast of Lights, I too thought that this is, it's a holiday tradition at Saddleback College, and I too thought this was the best ever, and Dr. Scott Farthing's comments were just magnificent. And he had all of us wiping our eyes in gratitude and in friendship. So have a lovely holiday, everyone. Okay, now, um, trustee, um, Satira Mateen?
Well, how could it have been the best ever? You weren't in the choir this time.
I know, I know. Right. It was, it was second best to when I was in the choir. I was so scared when I was in the choir, because all these fabulous singers were there. It was really frightening. But it was really fun to be in it, because I loved that performance. Okay, thanks. Okay, trustee Satira Mateen?
Um, unfortunately, I don't have much of a board report, because I've been stuck with finals. But I'm super thankful for everyone on the board, and I hope everyone enjoys the holiday.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And now the associated student government reports. First, Sam Lockhart from Saddleback, and DeAngelo Hunter from IVC.
It's a pleasure to be here, board, and thank you for having us, as always. I want to reiterate the saying, the thanks for all the assistance that we've gotten throughout the year. I congratulate the board on very, making it through what is undeniable, has been undeniably, a very interesting year. I want to thank the Office of the President's Student Services, Student Development, DSPS, and members of the Equity and Inclusion Council for constant support and for getting us through, and for helping the school run, for helping student government put together some things, and for, obviously, for the events they put on in their own right, including us. And we have some good news to report of our own, the international, our International and Diversity Student Council within student government. It has helped put together a speaking event featuring Ariel Savage. And in a related note, we're working on addressing a bathroom equity issue, and school has been really good about that. So we want to thank, thank everyone again. I want to thank our International Club Council as acting as a contact point for clubs. We have some good news that our Campus Sustainability Council has organized a hike to Casper's Hot Springs and is working together to help, working toward reducing plastic distribution and waste at Saddleback. The Honors Student Council, they organized a stress relief workshop, and we worked to fund a rover robotics project at Saddleback. And once again, I cannot reiterate enough, we have so much good news. And we, and on behalf of the Associated Student Government, I want to reiterate my thanks to the board, my thanks to ASIVC for working together, working with us on the vaccine, past vaccine issue. And again, special thanks to trustee Matine for essentially being the glue between ASIVC and ASG. So many thanks, and happy holidays, and may we prosper in another good semester and another good year.
Thank you, President Lockhart. And thanks for funding all those wonderful projects. And the next one is DeAngelo Hunter from IVC.
Hello, board. Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Hey, what a year it's been. So glad to have had you all on our side, especially as we passed the, our resolution, that we teamed up with Saddleback College with my peer over there on our sister college. I'm so happy to have been working with so many awesome people along the way. ASIVC, the student trustee team, like, everything's been very awesome. And like, I just want to say happy holidays to everyone from ASIVC. So just kind of go into like our updates real quick. We've had so many of committees pop up to handle our, pretty much our activity load. We have an events committee now to directly handle all events that are being planned. We have our pathways committee to handle issues with, say, transferring, but then also, you know, identifying issues with that process. We're working closely with the administration's Guided Pathways Committee to make a summit that is just as successful as last year's, which had a ton of student presenters, which was awesome. Speaking of student presenters, we had the leadership, the Phi Theta Kappa Leadership Summit on Saturday, where ASIVC got to have multiple presentations on leadership. And these are all student-led presentations. It was a very awesome event. It was all recorded. It'd be awesome to like, share that with anyone who's interested. ASIVC, we passed, and we passed and established four new scholarships for international students. This was because international students find it difficult to find scholarships in other ways to kind of like, kind of like, you know, fund their education. So we found that. We thought that was really awesome. We had a student housing presentation, which we want to kind of like, go alongside with what's going on with the feasibility studies going. So that'll be awesome to present once it's ready. And then we had our luncheon for our last meeting of the year. And so with all that being said, it's been an awesome year. And I enjoy giving these reports, and there's been a lot going on. And I'm just super excited to report for more going on in the next year, and have a great rest of the year.
Thank you. Sounds like some wonderful things going on at both colleges. Okay, the next is Irvine Valley College Academic Senate, and Rebecca Beck, who is the Academic Senate Vice President, will be speaking for Dan DiRae.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Well, thank you. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Rebecca Beck, and I am the Vice President of Equity for Irvine Valley College's Academic Senate. And Dan can be here with us this evening. And I wanted to take the opportunity to invite all of you to a panel we're going to have during Flex Week. And the panel is going to be on Critical Race Theory: Dismantling Information. It is going to be taking place on Wednesday, January 12th, from 3:00 to 4:30. And so if you are able to log in into the Irvine Valley College's Flex Week schedule, you'll be able to see it. But I wanted to take the time to let you guys know about this panel. And thank you very much for the time, and I wish all of you a restful and peaceful winter break. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. And next is Saddleback College Academic Senate, Margot Lovett.
Okay, I think I'm now unmuted.
Yeah, you are now.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you all. Tonight, I would like to start by responding to a question posed at last month's board meeting by trustee Riddell, who asked, why can't trustees be involved in DEI? Since that term typically is used for hiring, I assume that's what she was referring to then and today as well. So let me address her question. Where faculty positions are concerned, the answer is simple. Once a hiring policy has been mutually agreed upon by the Academic Senate and the board, trustees cannot get involved in hiring or attempt to influence the selection of candidates, because that violates the integrity of the process. The next issue is a change proposed by the Board Policy Subcommittee to AR2431: Recruitment of the Chancellor. The Academic Senate fears that this change may have unanticipated consequences we should bring to your attention. The change allows board members to review all applications that meet minimum qualifications. This sends an unintended message to members of the search committee that the board doesn't trust our professional judgment and doubts our ability to do our job. But far worse is the possibility that this will raise the unfounded suspicion that trustees want this information to attempt to influence the committee's selection of finalists. That is a gross violation of the hiring process. Finally, we are concerned about changes to the chancellor job description. Currently, there is an extremely small pool of candidates seeking positions at the highest levels of community college administration, requiring 20 years of experience. With 10 of those at the CEO level, will likely mean that only a few white men at the end of their careers will qualify for the job. Or there might be zero applicants who meet this qualification. As such, this change runs counter to the board's stated commitment to promoting equity and diversity at all levels of hiring within the district. We urge you to reconsider it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll discuss it. Thank you. And next is the Faculty Association, Louis Long.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Chancellor Burke and Vice Chancellor Viscachill for their collaborative work with the association in negotiating an agreement regarding the impact and effects of the district's vaccine mandate. I believe we have worked out a reasonable and fair agreement protecting the health and safety of the staff and students and faculty, while not unduly burdening those who remain unvaccinated. On tonight's agenda, as my colleague, President Lovett, has pointed out, in the proposed chancellor's job description, the minimum qualifications for the position include at least 20 years of experience in senior-level management, preferably in a multi-campus district, and at least 10 years' experience in an executive-level administrative position. First, these minimum qualifications risk a failed search. As President Lovett pointed out, the list of qualified desirable candidates nationwide is already quite limited. And further limiting it to people who have 20 years' experience directing a large and complex organization, and who are also still breathing, and that's, though that's not specified in the description, desirable qualification, makes the pool even smaller. Also, requiring 20 years of senior-level administrative experience effectively excludes anyone with meaningful teaching experience, making it less likely that we will find an experienced educator. And also, and this is a serious concern that my colleague has already pointed out, implicitly limits the diversity of the job pool to favor old white people, primarily old white men, who were hired into administrative positions at the end of the last century. Being an old white man myself, I don't have a problem with old white men. But I do think that we need to be concerned about opening up this position to a much broader range of qualified candidates who represent the members of our community and our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Things we have to discuss, for sure. Okay, and the next is the Irvine Valley College Classified Senate, Desiree Ortiz.
She's not logged on.
She's not here. And the California School Employees Association, Scott Ferguson-Green. There he is. Picture of his phone.
Thank you, Madam President, Board of Trustees. Wanted to congratulate all the board officers for the opportunity to serve another term. And I wanted to congratulate all the Board of Trustees for the past year, meeting the challenges that certainly have come up due to the pandemic and other issues. You know, sometimes the human spirit can be underestimated. And that's no more true than when a disaster takes place. And unfortunately, the human spirit and the goodness of it comes about when there is a disaster, and that's when it's recognized. The disaster that has taken place with all the tornadoes in Kentucky and the surrounding states certainly has brought new light to what giving means. And I most recently have been to Kentucky, just this past June. And I can tell you, a good part of the state is not easy to get to. Unfortunately, after the tornadoes, that is not true in some areas. Certainly not after places have been completely flattened by natural disasters. But the United Way is working fervently to raise donations, and through the partnership of the community relations of CSA, they're counting on CSA members to help raise those donations. And that certainly is something they can really count on. The United Way is donating 100% of all the donations raised that will go into the Disaster Relief Fund. And like I said, they're counting on CSA members to help raise that fund. Unfortunately, a natural disaster brings to light how humanitarian efforts should be the priority. And never should humanitarian efforts have to supplant partisan agendas. And with all that is going to be taking place, as far as giving, from all of us to people who are in need, the one thing that the holidays do and remind us that giving is so much better than receiving. And with that, I want to wish the Board of Trustees, the administrators, faculty, staff, and our students the very best of the winter holidays, and may 2022 be a much better year.
Thank you. Very, very good thought. And one of those tornadoes was projected to be the longest tornado in the history of the United States. It was a terrible devastation. Anyway, so now we're moving to President Milchiker. If possible, and the board is amenable to it, could we move 8.1 up above 6 and 7? Yeah, I'd be happy to move 8.1. Is the board amenable to that? Because I think the people giving a presentation are waiting. Okay, so let's move that up now. Okay, thank you. So now we're moving up to item 8.1, student housing presentation. Oh.
They do not have a representative.
Yeah, that's what, I was just told they didn't have a representative. Thank you. So there, there are Ann Vols. Okay.
Yes. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Perfect.
So President Milchiker, if I could just introduce the item real quick?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Tonight, we have with us two folks from the Cyon Group, as well as our Executive Director of Facilities Planning, Midhany Efrem. They're going to give us a presentation on where we are with our student housing feasibility study. So it'll be a quick one. So I will turn it over to Ann. I believe you're going to kick us off, or Midhany, do you want to kick us off?
Let's kick this off real quick, Ann Marie. Thank you for the introductions. Good evening, Board President Milchiker and fellow board members. Thank you for having us present tonight. This evening, we have Cyon, the Cyon Group, excuse me, that will be presenting and updating us on a housing feasibility study. As you may remember, the Cyon Group was contracted to start in March of 2020, and we all know what happened in March of 2020, right when the pandemic hit. At that point, a decision was made to delay the feasibility study. The study has since we started last summer. We're excited. The Cyon Group has been diligently working with advisory committees at each of the campuses. At this point, I'd like to introduce you to Ann Vols, the Cyon Group, who is the chief.
Can you read the words? Do I have the words typed across the campus? It's hard for some of the people to hear, but I can see the words typed across my screen. Can you see them?
Can you hear me fine now?
Yeah, I think maybe you need to.
You're a little muffled, Midhany.
I know. Maybe you need a new microphone. That's what I needed, and I got one.
Can you get a little closer? Can you hear me now?
I made it worse.
Why don't we just let Ann start and see how Ann does?
Someone actually bought me a microphone. It really changed the day.
Well, hopefully you all can hear me.
Oh, yeah.
Hopefully, that's all right. Okay, good. So thank you for having all of us. My name is Ann Vols. I'm a Senior Project Executive with Cyon Advisory Services. We are a campus housing advisory firm. I bring to all of you about 30 years of experience, always in real estate, 20 very focused in on higher education, and 10 doing exactly this type of work that we're doing with all of you. So real pleased to be here. I'm really also very glad to be joined with my colleague, Chelsea Mativier. She's an Associate Vice President with Cyon Advisory. She has been with us for almost five years, serving as a consultant and leading several of the work that the market and demand and feasibility studies, that she'll share with us some of the process in a couple minutes. And prior to that, she started her career in on-campus housing, working in recruitment and college access. Also with me is Ellen Olf, who came to us a couple of years ago, but started her career as well, working in on-campus housing, but has been doing this type of work that we're going to share with you two for close to 20 years in several community colleges. So with that said, why don't we go to the current state, which is just an overall, we can flip to the next slide and the next slide, quite frankly. You can go to the next one even. Just as a brief overview is to share with all of you is, we think sometimes, and over the years it's changed, I've really seen it myself, is campus housing on community colleges, is that new? And I certainly understand, and even myself for years have thought it is new. But just want to share that when, some research, not science, but 28% of community colleges across the nation do provide some form of campus housing. And in our own state, 10% of our community colleges do provide current housing. Nine of those you see here listed here have had campus housing for quite some time. And as you can see, they're pretty much in rural settings, with the exception of Orange Coast College, that opened up in the fall of 2020. And obviously, we all know where that's located, in Costa Mesa, California. Down below, too, is you're not alone. Several of your colleagues, and you probably heard, I heard, folks were at CCLC, and I'm sure several folks as I recognize, faces were at CCFC, are exploring campus housing. are exploring campus housing. We said 30% right now. Those are who we know are formally engaged in some type of feasibility process. We'll share later about SB 169, which shows that really the state and the community colleges were all really coming together to be a part of the solution for the housing insecurity crisis, which is of course, one big driver for campus housing. But with that said, Chelsea, I'm going to turn it over to you to really walk through the process that we've been doing with South Orange County District.
Fantastic. Thank you, Ann, so much. Appreciate it. And thank you all. A pleasure to be here. We've moved to the next slide, please. Next to and following. Great. So really what we want to explore this evening is understanding the comprehensive process that we undertake, especially as detailed here in Phase 1 and Phase 2. That really is the extent of which of our market study and our financial feasibility analysis. And it really starts with the initial data gathering and really immersing ourselves within the college's culture and experience. And within the district and just kind of the overall student setting, as well as some of the unique assets of each college, the setting, contextual challenges, et cetera. And so we were able to come to campus, we visited both campuses. And we conducted a series of meetings and interviews, both stakeholder interviews as well as student focus groups. Again, really generating, getting that information, kind of a qualitative data information. Most importantly, our gathering starts with a strategic objective alignment workshop, really sets that framework for the continuation of our work. So in a few minutes, Ann will talk a little bit about Phases 3 and Phase 4. And those are still really guided by the initial strategic objectives here set in Phase 1. So once we're engaging with folks, we're having those conversations. We're then also looking at the off-campus market, trying to understand what's available for students. And you know, what's there that may be available, but also may be a challenge for students to access, cost, et cetera. Really understand that cost and that price point. Of course, we're looking at peers, and we're looking throughout at other institutions. As Ann mentioned a bit about the context of California community colleges overall. And we're understanding and exploring that as well. Throughout this process, you'll note here, so that we're engaging with a variety of stakeholder groups. So we're engaging with the advisory committee. We're here in providing an update. And at each point, there's a good checkpoint to provide that update. This is where we're moving in, this is where we're moving forward, just to ensure again that we're catching and capturing all the unique nuances and creating a full picture of our, of both campuses, of colleges, and the needs of the students. Ultimately, the first phase really resulting kind of a comprehensive market study that calculates demand, cost tolerances, and really shows student interest. All of that is fed into a financial feasibility analysis. We developed those performas, financial modeling, all of that really just to test some different options, different delivery options. We're collecting the data to then test and understand what may be available. And really thinking about college, excuse me, California funding or other opportunities to establish and deliver the student housing. And then ultimately, leading with that, May 2022, go, no go, which is providing you all with all the information that we've collected from both colleges, from the analyses and the financial analyses and the implementation plan of determined. Move forward and saying, now that you're informed and empowered with this information, is this an advancement or not? And then what does that look like moving forward? Moving on to the next slide, please. This really details the timeline with which we are capturing Phase 1 and Phase 2. And you can see here that many of them are iterative processes, excuse me, and happen concurrently as well. Again, that really just speaks to the quality of the data that we are gathering and the extent of the immersion that we are achieving. Then again, outlines the months through which and kind of specific checkpoints that we'll be engaging again with this EC and the advisory committees, as well as coming back to the board to present to you all our findings, as well as sharing additional information. And then being able to answer and get that go, no go decision. All of which then comes back to that kind of May 2022 timeframe. Moving to the next slide, please. Wanted to take a quick moment to really dive into and understanding the participation in the data collection. Mentioned a few slides ago that this is a comprehensive process. I mean, that we're really spending time hearing from constituencies across both colleges. Everything from high-level leadership to faculty and staff. And especially those groups that are engaging with students most frequently. And then also really hearing from our student government, I'm, excuse me, our student populations. So conducting three, four, five focus groups with students, again, to hear and gain their insights. And understand what their challenges are, understand what their experiences are, understand how they could see the future and the vision of student housing on their college campus. Ultimately, this is about shared governance and engaging that participation. And it's getting feedback from back and engaging back and forth. Mentioned the quantitative component, an online student survey that is one of the most critical pieces of our market and demand analysis. And that survey will launch at the beginning of, in the beginning of spring, really to all students across the district. Again, it's going to look into what does that cost tolerance look like? What does that need? What's that interest? What, you know, what do they envision to be there? Also, a little bit more about what their current living situation is. Engaging, getting some understanding about housing insecurity and unhoused students. Again, trying to assess the overall conditions. That data review, as we mentioned at the beginning, happens throughout. And that off-campus analysis, peer analysis, again, all feeding into that financial analysis, which allows us to model different options. From a qualitative component, and speaking about those strategic objectives that hit at every point moving forward. And then those stakeholders throughout. Also worth, really important to mention, the community outreach and engagement. And this is something that we talked a bit about internally into our process. And have outlined times at which we will engage. And what that engagement will look like, and really here to support and provide the strategic framework for, you know, conducting open town halls and forums and getting other mailed information, et cetera. Move on to the next slide, please. One more. Great. So we mentioned that we were on campus for a couple of these. We've had several Zoom meetings and stakeholder student focus groups, et cetera. So we really wanted to provide a brief summary of what we've heard while on campus and what's been established. So both colleges established their strategic objectives. Again, this was an interactive workshop with college leadership and advisory council. Really understanding what should any future student housing project seek to achieve. Really noticing, of course, the addressing the basic needs concerns and the critical importance of that. Making sure that the housing is cost-effective, making sure that it is affordable for students. Encouraging to support student success, fostering diverse and inclusive communities. All of these things being important to both colleges and institutions. Of course, thinking about student retention, student success. What is that risk management? What's the implication for the whole college community transforming really from a 24/7, you know, or a, excuse me, an 8 to 8 institution, or an 8 to 5 institution, really to a 24/7 campus environment? Next slide, please. Great. And then you can see here, again, really some of the key focus of what we're hearing from both colleges, both from the stakeholders and the students. Again, recognizing the importance of student housing. And what, having some of those conversations about what does that transformation look like? Cost and security being critically important as well, unsurprisingly. But also to hearing from students that they feel really safe and secure on the campuses. So what does that then look like to create that on-campus home feel? Make sure that we're establishing that safety and security there. Cost, again, unsurprisingly, most critical. Again, when we're really thinking about retention and recruitment, removing barriers for students. So just rich information that helps to amplify and dissect some of our quantitative data that we'll really collect from the student survey. And with that, I'll pass it back to Ann to talk about next steps.
Thanks, Chelsea. So, and you can go to the next slide, please. So of course, and there it goes. All of the information, as Chelsea mentioned, is to empower the most informed decision-making. Do we go forward? If we go forward, what does that housing look like? Who is it serving? How does it advance those strategic objectives? Ties into this very important implementation plan. We don't have the answers for this right now. That is coming from the Phase 1 and the Phase 2. Obviously, if we're going to develop, stating the obvious, we need to go through a sequel process, which would further, of course, be inclusive of that required community outreach, which is obviously very important as we advance development. So Phase 3 is really developing how we go forward and when. And then, of course, once we go forward, it's really that design and construction phase. And the two best least days of my career in every campus that we get to work at is that groundbreaking day and the day the students move in. And gosh, to even go back years later and see those students experiencing and achieving those outcomes. So it all takes a process that if you go to the next slide. And it also all takes a lot of time. So because this is such an important decision that all of you are making as to if you proceed, how you proceed. So the projected opening date that we're looking at right now is fall of your fiscal year of '28. So to make sure that this is a very well-thought-out research process, time for the important engagement that must take place. And we certainly believe in it in any community college setting, especially in California. So this is what we're looking at for a potential timeline. Of course, it can move it up and slow as most appropriate for all of you. You can go to the next slide. So just to switch gears a little bit, there are factors too that are going to tie in to the work that we're doing right now, especially that financial analysis piece. And that is, we are all following as a group, as the Department of Finance. We are all in this together to determine how and if we can receive any of the monies that have been appropriated by Senate Bill 169. So South Orange Community College District did apply for a planning grant for what we've heard from the Department of Finance. We should know in March or June. So what we hear back will tie into our financial analysis and potentially alter slightly maybe our implementation plan. Go to the next slide. So where are we at right now in the application status? As I mentioned earlier, I said about 30% of the community colleges are actively studying campus housing. But when these monies became available to serve the low-income students to really combat the housing insecurity and homelessness that we have in our state, and it's terrific in our state. We hear the stories, as I know all of you do as well. But as you can see, 92 applications. So far more than 30% are looking into student housing being a part of the solution to achieve one of those objectives, which Chelsea had up there earlier, basic needs and low-cost housing for a certain population of our students. So there are three rounds of the funding for the bill. And like I said, even we've heard it's probably going to have to modify as we're all new in this, including the state. But right now, it is said that there would be three rounds of funding. So if we do not receive monies in March, June, or whatnot, you are able to be considered in the next couple of rounds. And with that, we can open it up for any questions or feedback.
Thank you for your presentation. Okay, Trustee Jamal.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I had three questions. We have not presupposed that we're moving forward with student housing. Is this still an efficacy phase where we're evaluating, you know, the feasibility or efficacy of doing this? That, yes?
That is correct. That is how we approach all of our projects. Is as an objective advisor, we certainly just share the data and the findings. And sometimes it is even too that it's not in the best interest to move forward at this time.
And then, are you, are you going to be looking at, you know, actual locations of student housing on our, the two college campuses? I don't know if we're going to look at ATUP at all. Is that, is that part of it as well? ATUP and the two college campuses? Midhany, I see you nodding.
I'm going to try to unmute. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Much better? Muffled?
It's a lot better. It's a lot better.
Okay. So yeah, so we are going to be looking at ATUP and IVC as one. Trustee Jamal, as an option, and then Saddleback as a separate option because of the close proximity of the two sites.
Okay. And then it's not, I know it's not part of the study, but I'm wondering from our two consultants, are there any community colleges that offer housing, college-supported housing, college-underwritten housing for faculty and staff? I know it's done at the university level, but I'm wondering, is it done at the community college level? Anywhere else?
Yes, I don't know how many colleges, it's not too many, offer faculty and staff. San Mateo College has had faculty and staff housing for quite some time, and it's in Phase 3 of its development. I would have to get back on where there's other colleges right now. But most of our studies right now are encompassing to faculty and staff housing review.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And, and you know, it says that the Department of Finance received 92 applications. I guess for the feasibility study. How many, how much money do they have and how many will they award, you know?
They have over $2 billion, slightly over that, of which 50% goes to the community colleges.
Okay.
And $25 million of that $2 billion, I think it's $500 million in the first go-round. But $25 million of that $500 million would go towards the planning.
Okay.
And then the other goes to construction.
Yeah, we're in the planning one. Okay. Okay, thank you.
That's right.
Thank you. We applied for a planning grant. Okay. I'm sorry, Trustee Anman.
No need to be sorry.
Okay.
Just getting in line. Okay, I have a couple of safety considerations. One thing, I've heard a number of, including at the convention. I've heard a number of presentations on this topic. And when they get to Orange Coast College, they don't mention that there have been deaths in the student housing situation. So my question is, what is the, is there any supervision? I realize this is not the old days where you had a house mother or whatever it was called. But is there any supervision of the people that live there? And since they are humans and young and so forth. Is there liability to the college since the college owns it and it's on college land? Those are assumptions. Am I saying that right? It seems to me that there could be liability if your grown adult child was there. And these kinds of things happen. So I'm kind of concerned about that. And I list it as safety for the college because of liability and safety for the students. Because whenever you get a group of people together, there's always possibilities.
Right. I am so glad you asked those questions. Absolutely is. For on-campus housing, there is a real strong residential assistance program, residential life program. At Orange Coast College, there are about one resident assistance for about every 40 residents. They live onsite. There are two onsite managers that live there, and there is 24-hour security as well, working very, very closely with the college. So then I'll answer your question, and I'll go back to the two incidents that were just so, you know, so sad for all of us last year. But so there is not any financial risk overall when an incident happens, but this is your housing. This is on-campus housing at any school. So of course, there is, there is risk. And the school, I can say even personally, acted very appropriately and was right there and notified immediately. But financial liability risk, it actually all sits because that's a public-private partnership. I don't know what delivery method you all would do if you advanced. But the terms of the public-private partnership, if I can say it correctly, sit within the project documents and do protect the school. Those were two incidents. They were unrelated, but somewhat related. And unfortunately, as was in the papers, they were related to drugs that took place in the room. So I think all precautions, and at least in my opinion, were taken place. And very, very sad what took place there.
So it seems that even though Orange Coast had the 1 in 40 ratio, it didn't prevent some pretty important events. Maybe it's not possible to prevent. Just asking.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, what goes on inside a student's room, we try everything we can. And anyone does to pull those students out and mental health and whatnot. Drugs are horrific and the effects they have and the outcomes they have. I wish we could all control it, but unfortunately, there just are situations that you cannot.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you for the presentation.
Okay. Well, thank you for the presentation and, um, we're moving on. Thank you so much for the presentation.
I guess, I guess I do have a question.
Okay, we have one question.
So what's the next step right now?
So, Anne, I can quickly take that real quick.
Oh, definitely.
So we're gonna have a survey, uh, trustee Prendergast, uh, again, starting mid-January, correct? Uh, I'm looking at Chelsea here. Uh, that will go out to the students. Um, a lot of what's gonna transpire for that, I mean, if that's gonna inform of what we're gonna be doing. Uh, we do plan on meeting with the committees and, uh, the advisor committees and also the community to garner additional input. Uh, and then we will be, you know, doing more studies to, to get, to inform us some more. So we can come back to the board. I believe we're coming back in April to provide you an additional report. Um, at that point, we'll, we'll, we'll be recommending something. Um, and then in May will be the go, no-go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, Anne, I don't know if you wanted to add or Chelsea, anything else to that?
No, we hear, we hear you perfectly now though, so that's great.
Sorry about that.
No, it's no problem. Thank you. Okay. Well, well, thank you for the report and we'll be seeing you again.
Thank you all.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, um, the next, uh, we're, we're going back again and the next item would be the nu- item number six, uh, 6.1, the resolution number 2129, which, um, we have to do every month right now because it's, uh, it's resolution number 2129, authoring, authorizing remote teleconferencing board meetings pursuant to AB 361. This allows us to have hybrid meetings, uh, along with the, to comply with the Brown Act, uh, from December 24th through January 23rd, 2022. And after that, we may be meeting in person so that we might not need it anymore. So do I have a, um, uh, uh, would someone like to make the motion?
So moved.
Okay, trustee Jay makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second. Do we have to hear the resolution, like read it out or a summary?
I don't think we do.
No, I don't.
Trustee Prendergast.
No, just, okay.
Okay, I don't think so. Okay. So, um, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchaker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, and the next, um, item is the, um, minutes. So if there's a, uh, a, is there a, um, would someone make the motion, please?
So moved.
Trustee Jay made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And trustee Prendergast, second. Uh, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchaker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, so the next item is, is the chancellor search. And, um, this is, uh, I guess this is partially the board's inf- item. I want to thank, um, the board committee met together and we did a lot of work in, in, um, putting things together. And we also have, later on, we're gonna a- accept the, um, the administrative regulations on the chancellor search, which we just got today, today's meeting, and it helps us with it. I, I was going to suggest, um, is there's, is there's, would there be, would the chancellor or Anne Marie like to present something for this item?
Because you were in the meeting. I was not.
So can I?
Yeah.
I just like to make a comment. Um, so I, I appreciate, uh, Louis Long and Margot Lovett, their comments. Um, I, I'll be honest, it's the la- the last thing I want to do is get older and get whiter and less diverse. I mean, it's kind of strange when you look at me, but I'm, I'm getting older. You know, when I was involved in this process before, my concern was just that, that the way the job description was written when we went out last time, limited it to only someone in the California community college system that had, you know, decades of experience. And that, and that by default, that limited it to a very, uh, small number of individuals. Um, so that is absolutely not the intent. But having said that, I agree with what you're saying. Um, and I suggest, um, that we, on the job description, we revert back to five years of senior level experience. And Anne Marie and I had the conversation, what is senior level? Um, not sure exactly what that means. But, um, I think we want the most diverse pool of candidates. Uh, frankly, not just in terms of gender, ethnicity, race, but also, um, uh, where they come from, uh, geographically and, and, and the type of institutions. You know, we pulled the president from Saddleback College from Seattle. Um, and so, you know, it may not necessarily be someone from, from California, but I would recommend we go back. So that wasn't the intent, but I could see how it was, uh, it could result in that. So I would revert, I would recommend under experience, we revert back to five, five years of demonstrated senior level. And maybe Anne Marie can explain what senior level is, but let's go back to five years and then, um...
Senior level is typically vice president and above.
So will, will that be understood?
Yes.
Even people who are applying from outside of the community college system?
I don't know about that because, you know, the way you do vice presidents in banking is different than the way you do vice presidents in education.
Right. So that's what, I mean, I worked a lot in the private sector and, and it means, it doesn't necessarily mean vice president. It could be director, it could be senior director. Um, but I guess we'll figure that out. Uh, we don't need to define it. But I recommend we go back to five years. Um, and then for senior level, um, we're gonna have to, I guess, let that evolve, that definition as, as applications come in. That'll be filtered out by the, if we get a consultant or the committee. And then for the CEO experience, that is important, but again, we don't want to limit it. Um, I think working with the board of directors like us, it's not easy. Uh, having some experience, direct experience, working with the board is extremely valuable and helpful. Um, you know, we're, we can be a handful at times, but, you know, we, we are elected. Uh, but I suggest we go back to the three-years experience, um, as, uh...
So go back to five years and three?
I thought it was, it says, what was the original?
Five and three.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Go back to three, sorry. Five at senior level and three for CEO. But it's not just CEO. It says, it could be three years experience as a CEO, chancellor, deputy chancellor, vice chancellor, college president, superintendent, or assistant superintendent. And I would say even, or comparable position because we're, we're limiting it to only those positions. I think my suggestion would be go, let's go, keep it, go back to three. But I would add comparable position to...
Yes, or organization of comparable.
There you go. Okay, co- that's fine. Then that I think addresses it.
Can I ask too, uh, I, I agree with that. I support that 100%. Um, 'cause yeah, I, I'm, I'm thankful for, uh, Louis Long bringing it up. 'Cause I was going to that, you know, one of my peeves in the administrative world at the K through 12 level is you get these guys that have been in the classroom a whole year. They move, they're ambitious, right, you know, they jump right into vice principal and then they're a principal in three years. And they get into the higher administrative positions and they've completely forgotten what it was like to be in the classroom. And they make decisions accordingly. Like, you're like, who, who would think that's a good idea? But anyway, so I, 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 I was gonna address that very thing because of that issue. So I, I appreciate that change. Um, I, I, I know it's a semantics thing, but it says experience with working with a diverse board. Diversity.
Yes, the experience working with a diverse board.
But I mean, diverse...
The diversity you have an issue with.
It's diverse can have so many different meanings. So, I mean, are we a diverse board? I mean, depends on how you're defining that.
Diversity of opinion.
Yeah, I think that's diverse.
I think that's what it means. It's, I think you're right. It's...
It, the semantics of it bug me.
It doesn't mean diversity in the sense of ethnic or gender.
I know that.
Gender expression. It, I, I agree. It doesn't, it me- here it means diversity of opinions.
Yeah.
So should we?
And diversity.
I don't know if there's another way to word it though. That's my, my thing. But other than that, I completely support the changes.
I, I support the changes also because I, I think that, um, Margot Lovett and Louis Long really have had experience for years working with chancellor searches as well. And what they explained was we don't want to, um, limit the people that are applying to people that have just been in the system for 20 years. Because that's kind of cuts down on diversity. It cuts down on women. It cuts down on people from different countries and different areas. And, and, and we, we don't want to limit it to that. We want to keep it open and have it, um, you know, have, people have experience, of course, but not necessarily 20 years of experience. So, so I agree with that also. And, and...
But I, I'll make a motion to accept it with the changes.
Okay.
Oh. I mean, after a second, you can certainly speak to it.
Second.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
And, and I was gonna suggest some other things, but not, but not for this. I was gonna suggest some other things, but not for the description.
Okay, but you still need a motion and a second on the item to discuss it.
Oh, okay. So do you want to make a motion?
Uh, with those changes and we got a second, now you can open it up for as much discussion as you want.
Okay.
Before it's voted on.
Okay. I, I was gonna suggest having a special meeting sometime in January if possible. Uh, and that would be, you know, just a special meeting, just to talk about the chancellor search. If, if, if the board agrees to that, you know, just to discuss, um, some of these items and discuss what we want to do. And, you know, just because we could discuss it more without the TV cameras running, but yet it's, it's open and anyone could come to it. And I guess if someone wanted to come with a TV camera, they could, you know?
To what end though? Like what, we, we're having a board policy.
Yeah.
Vote tonight. What, what would that special meeting accomplish?
I, I guess, um, ta- talking about certain other things like, for instance, do, do, I, I guess we're discussing it today, but one of the things we're discussing today is whether we want to hire a search firm or not. And, and I, I, we could, um, have, I know Anne Marie and the chancellor have, have feelings about that and they could discuss their feelings about that. Or I could tell you what their feelings are. Um, and, um, and we actually do have a timeline. I put together a tentative timeline. And Anne Marie put together the, a better timeline. And, um, so, um, I, I guess it would be just to discuss, you know, we, we, one, one of the things we have to do is we have to pick a community member. And I guess we're picking a community member by January. We could discuss, unless we can talk about it with just two, two or three board members, who that community member would be. So, uh, does the board mem-
I, I, so I don't think it's a bad idea. I think, um, Marcia, trustee Milchaker.
So you can call me Marcia.
Marcia.
Okay, either way.
So just point of order question.
Yeah, either way is okay.
To the, to administration. So we're voting tonight on the chancellor job description, the qualities and attributes of a chancellor, which is part of this, the item, and then the timeline. So in the timeline, I think, Marcia, it includes the appointment by the board of a community member.
Right.
So my, is that in here? I saw it when I looked at it.
I think it's at the January meeting, but I looked at it again.
So that means that if we approve this item tonight with these modifications, um, on the experience level, um, then next month, the, an item will be on the board, an agenda item will be on, um, voting on a community member, right?
Correct. Right.
Um, so I think that...
And, and we could solicit names from you, from each of you. That would be on the agenda item and then you would discuss those names and just, and determine which community member of all the ones presented or recommended. And we would just take your recommendations and put them on a list. And then you would make your selection as a board as to who that person is.
Okay.
And that's, that's how it, that's how that could be done.
Okay.
We would just solicit from each of you, uh, recommendation.
Well, I'm, I'm, I don't, if the board doesn't want to have a special meeting, we don't have to do it.
Well, I'm...
Yeah, we're just trying to decide if it's, if it's important or not.
I don't mind special meetings if there's a function to it.
Yeah, yeah.
It just, I, I'm, I'm confused. I mean, you're, you're, the way, the way you described it, we're already doing some of that tonight and it gets done during the process.
And then, and then, and then the board, um, leadership had a really, really long meeting that we, um, discussed a lot of these things and got a lot of it going, which was, I think, very, very valuable that we got it all going, you know, and, and, um, and got the timeline going and, and what we have to do going. So, so maybe we, we don't need a meeting. Maybe it's possible.
I think trustee Prendergast is right. You might, I mean, need one. I wouldn't rule it out.
Yeah, I wouldn't rule it out. Yeah.
Just, it has to have a function.
So it looks, so it looks like the other thing we need to discuss tonight, which is agendize, is the direction on a search firm.
Yeah, we do have to. And then we, we might want to discuss whether we want to have a board subcommittee, uh, work on the chancellor, uh, um, it's, it's not agendized though, so I don't know if we can discuss that.
Well, I would suggest that we, um, have a, so it looks here, we got the, the, the board policy in AR, the job description, which we already are gonna, agreed on.
Yeah.
Qualities, I think there was no...
Point of order, we're on an agenda item right now.
I'm going through the agenda item.
No, the one we're on right now.
No, because the policy's not in here.
So we're still, we're still discussing the motion and the second of six...
Got it.
Of 7.2.
Right.
And, and so discussion should relate to that item itself.
But it's, I'm looking at the exhibit. The, the search firm is in the exhibit, so can't we discuss it now?
For 7.2?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. Actually, I'll just, I think, I'll give you my thoughts. Um, I think there could be advantages to having a search firm. I think there's, um, I honestly don't think they provide substantial additional value in marketing. I think, um, you know, we could do a lot of that. Um, we have the same lists that they have. Um, we're gonna put together a nice, um, you know, marketing collateral for the position. I think we'll establish a separate page on our website. And the, and the, at the same time, I think it's helpful to have the search firm play some kind of role in the process. Um, it can be useful to the search committee, having a search firm play that role um, in, 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 in screening, um, yeah, applications as they come in, I guess. Um, the second part of a search firm is that they do the background checks, I think, after the second round. I think that's the way the AR is established, that when the candidates get to the second round, then they make it to that round, then we do background searches, um, or background checks. And, and I think a search firm can play a, I think, that role, I think, is, is appropriate. The question is really, do we need? And when we say search firm, I use that term loosely because it's typically, we're not, I mean, what I've seen, it's, you know, small, uh, uh, groups that have come together of, of independent consultants, typically former chancellors or former CEOs. We had the last time. So do we need, um, you know, a search entity in that role?
Yeah.
I think that's the question, for me.
Yeah, yeah. I, I don't know. I, I talked to a few people. I talked to the chancellor and, um, uh, vice chancellor. And, um, I, the feeling I got was if we have someone in our district that would be really good at, um, possibly, um, you know, chairing the committee and, and, and do, doing that work, then we might just need a search firm just for doing the background checks of the, of the, uh, candidates that we choose. Because the search firms are very expensive and we might be able to do a lot of this work ourselves. The only thing I would think a search firm might be better would, would be recruiting. But we could possibly recruit ourselves. We could certainly try to recruit ourselves. And, and, you know, they, they recruit probably the same way we do by sending out notices to everyone.
So, so as referenced, I think I'd like to hear what the chancellor and vice chancellor had to say about that.
Well, I said exactly that, which is I think they're very helpful at the stage where you're doing the background checks and could advise the board, uh, at that point. Um, it's always good to have a third party do that rather than the district do it itself. Um, in terms of the recruitment though, I, I find a little bit less value in selecting them, bringing them in for the recruitment level.
Well, that's good to know.
Okay, so on to that end, does that, does that firm exist? Is there somebody we can hire to do just?
Yes, because we, we did that with the, the searches for the college presidents.
Okay.
And that worked, it worked well. So that, you know, worked very well.
Vice Chancellor Gable, what do you think?
Yeah, I tend to agree. I've worked both ways, uh, in my previous history where we've had a search firm for the entire search, uh, process. And then where we've just done it for the background checks. I think, as it's already been stated, the way that we send out the information through all the various listservs and touch base with people. You know, there's also executive staff for a lot of times doing some of that one-on-one outreach for candidates that we think, you know, might be a good fit. I think we can do that. Um, but definitely I think you need somebody for the deep background checks because they're doing the deep dive, which we just don't have time to do ourselves. And, and they can dig a lot deeper on that. Um, I see vice chancellor... Um, I see vice chancellor Viscott Schill is up, and I don't know if she has a comment as well in her experience.
I know she has, yeah.
I, I do have a comment. Um, I would extend that a portion of what a search firm could do is answer a lot of questions that candidates might not want to ask us directly, but could ask a search firm. I think that's an incredibly important part of the process. And so I think that not just a reference check piece, but on the front end, having a third party that a candidate can go to to ask questions that they would not want to come to us to ask, I think would be extraordinarily valuable.
I totally agree. I think that's-
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Yeah. I, I would suggest we put together some kind of RFP that includes that element plus the background checks. I, I think you're right, uh, vice chancellor Viscott Schill. There is some utility in that.
Oh, I agree.
Yeah.
So you guys can put the-
So you want us to put an RFP together based on what we just discussed?
Yeah, just that, that construct that we, because we, we did an RFP, and in fact, the last time we had a chance before you were here, we interviewed them in public session, the, remember that? The, the search firms.
Okay, so with that, I, I mean, is there any more discussion on it?
Um, let me see. There was, no, the community member timeline and, um, and we don't have to discuss it right now, but at some point, we could discuss if we want a, a, a board subcommittee of three members to help with the chancellor search. Just like the three board members came together and put together, did a lot of work getting things started, which was really valuable. Does, do you want us to do it, or do you want another committee to do this?
Well, I mean, I guess that could go part of the discussion on the board policy and AR, as to what the makeup of the cert, of the process is.
The what, the what?
So the, the, the BP and AR-
Yeah.
On the chancellor search-
Yeah, that, yeah.
Is where, I think, if that's something you wanted to insert into the process, like, that a board subcommittee exists as part of the process. I think that's where it would be placed.
Oh, yeah, when we're talking about the, 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 when we're discussing the board policy and the subcommittee, that would be more, more-
I would think so.
Okay, that would be okay.
Um, so with that, I just want to make clear that, that my motion was, uh, on the exhibit A being amended with those, with those changes.
Okay.
You got, Ann Marie, you got the changes?
The changes-
Or just going back to what it was before?
Yeah, yeah, it's taking out the twenty years.
All right.
It'll make it more broad to, uh, attract more candidates. That might not apply, so.
And so there's no changes to the qualities or the attributes that was part of them? So was your motion for all three items to move forward and only change the job description for the experience?
I believe that was the only one that needed-
Okay.
Addressing.
And thanks to the board members for sending, um, additional information.
I assume you're accepting all of the other changes.
Well, do we need to clarify the word diverse, or is that, just leave it as is?
I'd like to close, yeah.
Or take it out?
I think it could be misunderstood.
Do you want to say with a diversity of opinion, just to clarify what the diversity is?
Yeah, experience with a board that has a diversity of opinions in an effective governance model.
I like that.
And then it's, it's listed again in desired qualifications, experience with working with a diverse board and effective, it's like, it's listed twice.
It's a better way of saying it.
Does it need to be twice?
I think we're diverse, but, you know, whatever. Okay, so does, does everyone agree to that?
So except, we're accepting all of the changes that are highlighted in yellow.
Okay.
We're changing the years of service back to, or the years of experience back to five and three. And we're looking for, for where it says, working, experience working with a diver, uh, with the board with a diversity of opinion.
A bor, a board which has a diversity of opinion, of opinions.
Okay, so, so that won't be-
Just to clarify what we're changing.
That, that won't be any, 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 um, any discussion or any, you know, that, that, I mean, I, I don't feel strongly about that either way, but it's okay.
And then you're accepting the qualities and the timeline as is?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the motion.
Right, and you're gonna, but you're, and you guys are gonna bring back next, I guess we're gonna vote on, or you're gonna put together RFP, not bring, yeah, okay.
And then in terms of the community member, the process that I suggested, which is soliciting names from each of you, putting them on a list and bringing it to the board at the end of Jan, at the January meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
And if we, if we, at some point, see that we need an extra special meeting, we can always call one. I mean, we don't have to call one now, okay? Is that okay with all the board? So everyone agreed that? Okay, I think, um, madam secretary, you can call the roll. Thank you.
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
Okay, and, and it was passed unanimously? And the next meeting is number seven point three, trustees' request for attending-
Excuse me, can I just answer?
Yes.
A reply to the comment that was made from, um, I just wanted just two sentences. I was gonna write an email, but I'd like everyone to hear this. When I discussed, uh, we getting involved in, um, the diversity, equity, and inclusion, I had no, absolutely none. I was, I was stunned to hear that that had, that might have to do with hiring or HR. Absolutely not, Margot. Um, I have been going, listening to many webinars now and becoming more versed, because having been an immigrant and having discrimination, I didn't want that to happen to our students. And I found that the DEI is a powerful ways to take real action in education. And, um, I was really looking at it as a comprehensive component to be described in our policies and in our programs. And I was very much moved by all the trustees that are involved and have their own committees. I mean, that's what, um, what, what guided me in thinking, well, maybe we should do that, this here. Um, again, I have it on my computer now, and I'm gonna pass it out. I was gonna make copies, but you can just get it in email. Of all that was stated, and my big thing is partnership for the concepts of DEI and partnerships in the community, having been the person, the lead person who created all those internships year after year after year for our nursing program, where I had up to forty students out in the hospitals. I know what it takes, and I, and I just want to be fair. And that's where my entire concept and my need was to include the trustees in this process, because it happens down there, but I want us to know about it. So that's where I came up with that idea.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, thank you. Um, thank you. So, so, so then, thank you trustee Witt. The next meeting is, uh, is the trustees' request for attending conferences. Um, is there a, a motion and a second?
So moved.
The trustee, uh, Jamal makes the motion. Is there a second?
There's a-
Trustee Inman seconds it. And this is a bunch of, a number of meetings coming up, um, for CCLC and CCLC legislative tu, uh, summit, and so it would be good if some trustees would like to attend some meetings, because, um, we don't attend very many meetings, so it might be good. So, um, to, to really bring the information back, like trustee Inman did today, talking about what she learned at the meeting. So, um, is there any, there any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah, trustee Jay?
Uh, it says there's one gonna be at the Laguna Cliffs Marriott.
I saw that.
April twenty nine, the night first.
That's the, that's the annual trustees' conference.
That's right, right around the corner.
That's by the CCLC.
I mean, that's right in our area.
We could stay with Bobby, at Bobby's house. She's right next door.
I mean, I was really, I was really surprised.
Yeah.
I mean, we should all go to that.
Yeah, we should. We could, no, no housing cost at all, you know, it'd be great. Thank you.
Well, that's, yeah, stay in Harlem.
Um, thank you. Okay, so madam secretary, can you call the roll, please? It's for me.
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, and, and the, the next one is, um, that was passed unanimously, and this is for approval. There's two board policies. One is anti-nepotism, and the one is communicable diseases. And I think trustee Jamal, uh, had his, had, had a suggestion that it was incorporated into that. So do I have a motion in a second for that?
I so moved.
Trustee, uh, Inman makes the motion.
I second.
And trustee Jay seconds it. Are there any questions? Okay, tr, um, madam secretary, can you call the roll, please? Yes?
Did you wanna discuss? Address your change?
No, it was incorporated into it.
No, he, I think she meant in the past.
Yeah.
Oh.
It was incorporated.
Yeah.
Well, we talked about last time.
Yeah, he added it at, when it, when we discussed it for review and study, and his suggestion was incorporated into it, and it was a good incorporation, I think. That's what I meant, thanks. Okay, madam secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
And the next item is the one that trustee Prendergast mentioned. This is board policy revision for review and study. And this actually, um, is the, um,
Recruitment of the chancellor.
Different items in here.
Yeah, there's different items. There's, there's, did I, did we get a motion and a second? Probably not. Nope. Is there a motion? Trustee, um, Wright, do you want to make a motion?
I, I'll move it for-
Okay, trustee Prendergast make the motion, okay?
A second.
And trustee Jay seconds it. There's a number of things. This is for review and study, so this is the first time we're reading it.
Right, so looking at twenty-four thirty-one, board policy on recruitment of the chancellor.
Yeah.
So I, I just want to get clarification, because so many ti, so we get all these sections in red.
Yeah.
Which implies that they're usually new. But I think the, the one that Margot Lovett was referring to is in article three. There's an A, B, C, and D, where apparently there used to only be an A, B, and C. So it gives the impression that D is new, yet there's strikeouts. So I'm try, I'm confused, is-
Yeah, I had to con, contact the chancellor and, and go through some of these-
That the whole section was new, somebody read it, struck it out, and changed it? Or was it already in there, and it's just been reworded and then reorganized? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Are you on the administrative rig?
No, I'm in, uh-
Board policy?
Policy?
Twenty-four thirty-one? Is that the one?
Oh, no, it is the administrative rig. I'm sorry, yeah, twenty-four thirty-one.
The admin rig. In D?
Right.
So it's article three-
Or four.
Or four, sorry.
Oh.
No, it's article D, or article three. It's on page four of twelve. Article three, there's an A, B, and it looks like C is a new section, and then D is a new section. D is in all red, but there's strikeouts and highlights. So typically, that means that it was already there and is now being revised. So, going back to the comment earlier, saying that it's a, it's a affront to the committee that we would want to see all the applications, it's already in the reg.
So I'll let vice chancellor Gable address it, because it's a, it's a combination of, when we went through it, the board subcommittee changed language. And then the process is, it goes from the board subcommittee to B-Park. So when B-Park made its changes, they're reflected here in the strikeouts and the yellow.
Got it.
So that you see everything that was there and can make your own judgments about it.
I see.
So article D was an article that was added by the board subcommittee when we originally met. So what we highlighted in yellow was to really show the board's subcommittee that changes had been made to the language that they had recommended. So what you're, what you're seeing highlighted are the changes that were made by, made and approved by B-Park, sent to chancellor's council, and approved by chancellor's council.
So where normally, outside of the board representative on the committee, the remainder of the board only gets to see the final five or three candidates, and doesn't really know any of the other candidates that were involved. Is that-
Is there a board rep to the committee?
I don't-
I, I thought there was.
No, there wasn't. I, I thought there was two, and I discussed it with chancellor, um, Burke, and found out that it, it was, it was, wasn't that clear, that there really, there's a board designee.
Yeah, the board designee is-
Is not the board member.
They're not on the committee?
No.
The board designee is, just like when you designate, when, when you designate us to do work for you, this board designee takes that same role, and is really operational in nature. So the board designee would appoint the, the management members to the committee. And if anything should come up during the process, where the vice chancellor of HR would need to consult, they would go to the board designee. It's really an operational role, and that person is not on the committee.
Okay, so-
Which is why typically, it's the chancellor or a member of the executive team.
So I think this is where, I, I know, uh, during the last chancellor's search, and the one before that, maybe even the one before that, we, we've always felt that, and trustee Jamal referenced this earlier, that this is our employee. We would like to be a little more involved in the process in some way that we're allowed. And I don't know if that means having someone on that committee or not, and why that would be, I mean, I, I've heard the argument why that's a bad idea, because then the candidate, I, I don't know. I, I, I guess I'd like to hear what you have to say on that.
So, um, I, I've actually seen it both ways. I actually was a trustee on a selection committee for a new superintendent president. But I was a former employee of that district, so I was walking into a situation where everybody knew me. And I wasn't removed from that district more than two years. So, you know, it, it can have, depending upon who, the circumstances, it can have a different effect. Uh, there can be times when it does chill the process for the first level committee. Because remember, they're not, they're a recommending body. They're not a hiring committee. They're a selection committee. And so, those are the things you would have to think about, whether or not that committee is going to be comfortable doing its work with a trustee on it. And then that trustee also has information that the rest of the board doesn't have, and has formed opinions about individuals in advance of what the full board, when the full board meets the candidates. And then you also run the risk that candidates play, they know who the trustees are, and so they play to the trustee. As a, and the, and the answers you give trustees in certain circumstances are different than what you would do in a selection committee.
Trustee Jamal?
And that's just, you know, those are just the viewpoints.
So then, all right, so let's say, all right, we, we stick with no board member on the selection committee. At what point would it be okay to insert a board member into the process?
Well, then, I mean, the candidates come to you.
After the selection.
Absolutely. I mean, you make the final decision.
So then I guess, I'd like to hear, I guess, some explanation pro, con on the idea of having access to all the applications from, for all of us.
So, but I think we're here, the, 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 look, we've wrestled with this issue a long time with this district. Um, I, I, I think at one point, I was at a trustee conference, um, and the North Orange trustees told me they not only hired the chancellor, but they were hiring the vice chancellors, uh, the trustees. Um, and I don't agree with that. Uh, I don't, I don't think that's a role the trustees would play. Um, I think-
Because North Orange hasn't had any problems.
Yeah, I, I'm not saying it was good. I'm just telling you what they were doing. I said, wow, that's, that, that doesn't seem correct or right. Um, and I, and I think, um, so I think where the language ended up, um, I think it's a good, good place. Uh, I think the, you know, the board does want to be more in the loop. Um, I think many of us wanted a seat at the table at the search committee that has not been, it's not in the, um, not in the policy at the moment, so we don't have a seat at the table um, in the hiring of the chancellor, even though it's, is the one employee that we do hire. But, um, so we're out of that process, so I think the language that's in here is a compromise. Um, and I think B-Park did a pretty good job, so I would accept the language as, as is.
I guess part of it is, is what, I mean, it doesn't say the whole board gets it. It's like, any board member that wants it, according to this, may be, uh, reviewed upon request.
So the way a language written before is, it was man- The way the language was written before is it was mandatory, and they changed it.
So, so some of us may say, hey, you know, I'd like to see all, who all the applicants were. Like, just not necessarily weighing in on it, not necessarily...
Correct, just to see it.
Just, I'm just curious. You know, we had twenty applicants. You picked five. I'd kinda like to see what the other were like.
Do you think...
Not, not to interject, but maybe, maybe have information to, to say, okay, let's say we look at these five and it's a failed search, and you say, you know what, can we go back and look at some of these? I don't know. I don't know if that's, again, I don't, I mean, everyone out there in the, in the constituency knows. I, I trust the process. I'm, I'm supportive of the committees and what they do, but at the same time, this is our employee.
Yeah, this is...
So I, 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 I guess, like you said, this is a nice compromise. I feel like it's, it's not probably gonna be... I don't, I don't foresee an overwhelming desire to see them all at this point. Um, it doesn't say when in the process we can ask for them. And I, I don't see in, in a way...
Doesn't limit when in the process.
Yeah, I don't see a way that, I, I presently can't foresee a way for it to be abused. That doesn't mean it can't be, but I, I don't, I don't think, at least in our present form, I see an abuse of this or a circumventing of the process.
No.
I agree.
And as long as that doesn't exist, I'm okay with it.
I agree too.
I, I, go ahead, Marcia.
No, no, I agree too. I don't, I, I wanna thank B-Park for putting that in, for allowing this, um, extra um, kind of involvement by the board. If the board wants to do it, I mean, it takes extra time to do it. I'm not saying the board is gonna rush to do it, but I, I think it was, it was, it was good of B-Park to do it, and I, I agree. I think I'm okay with it like that.
Trustee Wright has a...
Trustee Wright?
Uh, we, we, we're coming up to nine o'clock.
Yeah, we are.
Oh, thank you.
And we're gonna have to, and my wife's gonna, who, who is gonna pick, gonna pick me up around, uh,
So it's picking you up at nine o'clock?
But I think, I think she'll, she'll wait for another half hour.
Oh, she will? Okay, okay. So, 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 um, um, if any, no member has anything to say, can we vote on the item? Um, can you, um, call the roll?
Trustee, trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, so we need a motion and a second to extend the meeting.
Do we have a motion and a second? Okay, trustee, um, uh...
I...
Okay, tr-...
For until what time?
Uh, until nine, nine-thirty.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to, uh, uh, extend the meeting, okay?
Until nine-thirty? Motion and a second.
Motion and a second. Carolyn Inman and Bobby J, motion second, okay? Well, trustee Inman's made the motion and Bab- trustee Jay's seconded it. Barbara J, sorry.
Okay, trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Janice doesn't have to state.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Uh, trustee Prendergast, you had all your questions answered on that administrative rig?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I've...
Just checking.
Anything else I'll bring up later. I don't have to bring it up now. So, um, do we have a motion and a second for the approval of the consent calendar first, and then we pull the items?
Wait. Did we vote on it? We voted to extend the meeting. Did we vote on the, the item?
They voted on, you voted on the item.
We voted to extend the meeting, right?
You, you asked for polls first.
Okay, first, first I'll ask for polls. Polls for the, um, um, consent calendar. Was there any items to, that wanna be polled for the, that you went to poll for the consent? No? Okay. So do I have a motion and a second for, uh...
So moved.
So trustee Jay makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Inman seconds it, and, um, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, and then, um, the next one is, is the Award of Engineering Service Agreement. This is, uh, for Settleback College. So do I have a motion and a second for this?
So moved.
Who's, who said that?
May.
Okay, trustee Jay's made the motion and is, is second? Trustee Inman seconds it? Are there any, it's a, it's a very technical thing. This, they're, they're doing the, um, they're doing the engineering study. So it's, it's, uh, technical, but it's interesting. So, um, no, no comments. Um, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, thanks. And then the next one is, um, the academic employees. So trustee, uh, Vice Chancellor Visca-Chill, are there any changes on that?
There are no changes to eleven point one, thank you.
Okay, so, um, do I have a motion and a second then?
Second.
Okay.
Or first.
Okay, trustee Wright makes the motion. Is there a second? Trustee Inman seconds it. Um, can you call the roll? Oh, there, there are a few things I was gonna mention. Just, just very quickly, um, that, um, Anthony Rogers, the, uh, Settleback, wait, that's the wrong one. Okay, so... Oh, the Vice Chancellor, the, the, the longest, um, person that's retiring is Anthony Rogers, Settleback College Night Facility Operations Supervisor. He's been here seventeen years and six months, and he's retiring. Okay, is there a motion? Is, can you, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please? Thank you.
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Okay, Vice Chancellor Visca-Chill, are there any, um, changes in the, um, classified personnel item?
Yes, there, there are two changes. President Melchiker, the first one is in A one A, Maureen George on the first page. The second to the last line in her item, it should say forty hours a week, not twenty hours a week. So twenty hours should be crossed off, and it should be forty hours per week. The second, uh, uh, clerical error is on B. Uh, Camilla Maroufie, hers should say twenty hours and not forty, so they were just, uh, inverted. The first one in A should be forty hours, the second one in B should be twenty hours.
Okay, thank you. And there was just some people retiring that have been here a long time. Dewey Floranai, Irvine Valley Custodian, over twenty-five years of service. Susan Kwan, District Human Service Specialist, over eight years. Rosa Lothian, Irvine Valley College Custodian, sixteen, almost seventeen years. And Ruby Trot, Settleback College Lab Technician, um, fifteen, almost sixteen years. So people are retiring that have been here many years. So do we have a motion and a second then, please?
So moved.
So trustee Jay makes the motion and trustee, um, um, Whit, trustee?
Trustee Wright.
Wright.
Wright, uh, makes a second. So, um, can you call the roll, please, Madam Secretary?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Okay, and the next one is, um, the, the, um...
Non-bargaining?
Non-bargaining unit.
NBU.
N, NBU, non-bargaining unit. Are there, are there any changes, Vice Chancellor Visca-Chill? You said there aren't.
There are no changes, thank you.
Um, is there a motion and a second? Trustee Jay?
So moved.
Trustee Wright seconds it. Um, can you call the roll, Madam Secretary, please?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
And, and the next one is another human services one, adjustment to the salary schedule for district management. Um, and is there a motion and a second? No?
I said moved.
Okay, trustee Whit makes the motion. And trustee, um, Wright makes a mo- seconds it, and, um, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Okay, great. And, and eleven point five? Eleven point five administrator contract extensions. Um, do we have a motion and a second? No? Trustee Jay, do you wanna make the motion?
So moved.
Okay, and trustee, um, what, Rydell seconds it? Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
And the next one is, um, CSEA, um, um, Chapter five eight six, MOU on alternative work schedule for the summer. This is for the summer schedule, ten-hour work weeks. So, um...
So moved.
Trustee, uh, trustee Jay makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Inman? Um, can you, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Turn out where Davey should say.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Okay, and then, um, the next one, there's three in a row. There's, the first one is the, um, Police Officers Association or POA Memorandum of Understanding.
The first one is CSEA.
Oh, I'm sorry. The first one's a CSEA, um, Memorandum of Understanding for the COVID-nineteen vaccines. Um, is there a, um, uh, is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
So moved. Okay, so trustee Jay makes the motion, trustee Inman seconds it? So Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Okay, and, um, the next one is, um...
POA.
Is POA.
POA, Police Officers Association, better known as POA. It's a memorandum of, of understanding for the COVID-nineteen vaccinations. So, um, did we have a motion?
So moved.
Trustee Jay makes the motion and trustee Inman seconds it.
The most enthusiastic motion yet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Can you call, call the roll, please, Madam Secretary?
He Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
She has to be up here.
We're almost ready. Um, and then, um...
That was great.
Then the Faculty Association, and this is a memorandum, memorandum of understanding for COVID-nineteen vaccines with the Faculty Association. So...
I so moved.
So trustee Inman makes the motion and...
I second it.
Trustee Jay seconds it. So Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Not present. Not, not quite.
He's not...
A little bit out of, out of here.
He went outside. You could just say...
No, he's...
Well, mark him as not present.
Okay, yeah, that's better, okay. And then the next one, um, which is really the last item, I think, is, um, this is a military leave differential pay authorization of a classified management team member who is going on active duty. Um, so, um, is there a, a motion and a second?
So moved.
Trustee Jay makes the motion, okay. Trustee Inman seconds it. Okay, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Aye.
Trustee Wright, absent.
Okay, and, and I'll just, I'll just, what, huh?
That's for student trustee.
Oh, student, deny it for student trustee, I'm sorry.
Student trustee cannot vote on personnel.
Oh, okay, 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 sorry. Oh, okay, 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 sorry. And then I, I'll just read the information items out because that, that's, those are the, all, all the important meetings. And there's a response to public comments from previous board meetings, lists of board requested reports, facilities pan status report, Settleback College and Irvine Valley College speakers, COVID-19 respond block, block grant monthly summary, retiree OPEB trust fund, higher.
Just real quick on that.
Yeah.
In our audit committee, we found out how healthy this trust fund is doing.
Oh, wonderful.
It, it, it's a testament to the boards, the previous board that established this to, to deal with ongoing retirement costs for past employees. And, and this is working really, really well.
Excellent.
Investments are going well.
And thank the stock market too.
And thank the stock market.
So, I mean, we're, we're probably the best, we have the best fiscal services than any community college in the state, I think, because of things like this. So thank you. Thank you for mentioning that. And then the, the higher education emergency relief runs, HIRF monthly summary, the monthly financial status report. And then there's written reports and please read them. Do any of the, the chancellor, would you like to make an oral report? You had a written report that was interesting.
Yes, to wish everybody a happy holidays and stay dry and safe out there over these next few days. We need the rain, but.
We do.
Everybody forgets how to drive in it.
Yeah, they don't know how to drive in it in California. Thank you. Thank you. And, and Vice Chancellor Gable?
No report. Happy holidays.
Thank you. And, and Vice, Vice President Visca, Viscaill?
Yes, I just want to thank the leaderships of faculty association, CSEA and POA for working so respectfully and diligently to get those MOUs put to the board for approval. And then I also want to congratulate Scott Ferguson-Green. He was reelected as classified union president, so congratulations to Scott.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. And, and Bob Bermuda, does he want to say anything or?
Yes, after over twelve years in the district, this will be my last board meeting before retirement.
We'll miss you.
I do thank all the wonderful employees and fine colleagues with whom I have worked and this and previous boards for your support of technology.
Well, thank you so much and we'll miss you. Thank you. Keep in touch, okay? Very good. And then the college presidents. Does, does the president Stern want to say anything?
I would very briefly. First, I want to congratulate, congratulate Dr. Bermuda on his impending retirement. We're all very jealous, but we're all very thankful that you were serving the college during a very important time, Bob, and everything went so smoothly with you at the helm. And we're very grateful that you were present for all of these last couple of years, but more importantly, for all the years you served. Thank you. I want to say a couple of quick things to emphasize a couple of points from my report. First, though they were reported in past tense, not all of them actually happened. We did have a rain delay for our groundbreaking, of course, for Gateway. We hope to see all of you on Wednesday morning bright and early. And at this point, we are not expecting rain Wednesday morning, so it looks like a good choice because we had a lot of rain last Thursday at the original date. We did indeed host the CIF and that was a, a major success. Did not go completely without snafus, but just to illustrate